The Pine Bluff City Council meeting is hereby called to order for July the 7th, 2014. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett.
Here.
Alderman Easton.
Here.
Alderman Stepp.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Present.
Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
Here.
Alderman Hope.
Here.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes for June 16th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that the minutes as presented be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will go on to the committee reports. Alderman Brummett?
Yes, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met prior to the meeting and we discussed a budget adjustment from the Police Department that was in your packet. The amount is $16,383. As you all know, the jail fund is created by fines and fees from the courts and this money accumulates and it can only be utilized for certain purposes, primarily utilization of support of the courts. This money is to fund a bailiff in Judge Kearney's court and when necessary, he would also operate as a transport officer from that court to handle any needs that they would have in that regard. So the total is $16,383 and it doesn't come from the general fund, it's from the jail fund. I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $16,383 that is coming from the jail fund to fund an additional jail transport officer be approved. Floor is now open for discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I have. Now, this $16,000 is for the ballots of this year. Is that what that's for?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So, so his salary would be roughly, what, $35,000 or something like that? Yeah, well...
But all we're approving is this allocation for this six-month period. We're just approving this allocation for this six-month period while the funds are available for...
Okay, I understand, but it will have to be funded next year from the same jail funds and as you stated, that the jail funds are down some $200,000. If crime is down and the jail funds are down, you know, and I don't see why we should add another position that we've done without for a year.
Okay, any other comments?
I just had one. Alderman Brummett, you said that the money that comes from the court fees can only be used for certain things. So even though the funds are generated through Judge Kearney's office and Deputy Chief Powell indicated that if this didn't pass, that the judge could probably will not have a bailiff unless he brought it out of his budget. But as I understand, that these funds are generated through his court.
Right.
And then if that being the case, then are we saying that he has no other recourse other than to try to accept what the Police Department puts over there or somebody else who they decide they want to be there?
Just Alderman Stepp. The portion of the fees that's being discussed is, I think it's a $5 jail fund fee that every person that goes through the jail pays.
Okay.
That's a separate fee in addition to other fines and restitution and those kind of money.
Okay.
So they're only focusing on this $5 that's collected per detainee and the city gets a portion, and I don't have the statute in front of me, but the way it works, the county gets a portion and the city gets a portion. And within that statute, it discusses what you're permitted to use the money for and if you use jail fund money, it has to have something to do with either the detainees or transporting the detainees or something like that. Now, Judge Kearney can't elect to use whatever fines and fees that's generated by his court to hire someone if that's what he chooses to do, but that portion has to be attached to someone that either is somehow dealing with the people who are detained or going to be detained. That's the difference.
Okay, I guess I'm not, I follow your part away.
Okay.
So the $5 portion of the fees, that the judge has no say-so as to how that being handled because they come directly to the city?
No, because actually Ms. Young, the clerk there, has hired someone that handles only the detainee cases, a clerk that handles only that. Those people who have been detained coming to and from jail.
Okay, okay.
So she's used that portion of the jail fund for that.
Okay.
So as long as it's associated with some activity of the jail and it's set forth in a statute, as long as that's the case, then you can use those funds for that. Otherwise, you'd have to go within your budget to find those funds.
Then my next question is, and I'll be through with it, then if they have that set up under the jurisdiction of Ms. Young and the judge, then...
It's actually under AOL, it's actually under Administrative Officer of the Courts.
Okay.
That's who, that's who actually, that's who we go to when we want to find out whether you can spend the money.
Okay.
You know, this is a project that we want to do. For example, the Police Department, they want to build a jail, they want to make some modifications to the jail and they want to use those funds for that, so...
So if Judge Kearney wanted to specifically address the issue for somebody that he had in mind, then he'd have to go through the same people and process that you all go through, AOL?
ALC, only if you're using the jail funds.
Okay.
Now, if you're using some other, whatever other revenues that they receive, I guess, from the state based on the fines and fees that are collected, in that instance, he can just place it in his budget.
So right now, we're just looking at it as a jail fund specifically, this $5 that is generated is $16,000.
Right.
Okay. But if, Ms. Henn, is it $5 or $20?
It might be $20. I don't know the exact number, but I know that there is a fee, so I'm not exactly sure what it is, and I don't have the statute in front of me. It could be $20. I know that whatever's received per detainee is split between the county and the city, so you may be correct on that.
Okay, any other comments, discussion questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
May we have roll call?
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easton.
Aye.
Alderman Stepp.
No.
Alderman Walker.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All righty. Move we pay the bills that the city owes?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the bills for the city be paid. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes Ways and Means.
Thank you, sir. Ordinances and resolutions. Alderman Brummett?
Yes, Mayor. The Orders and Resolutions Committee met and the recommendation from the committee is that we will complete Items 1 and 2. Items 3 and 4 will be read for the second time. Item 5 will be read for the first time. Resolutions 6 through 16 will be completed with the exception of Number 10, which has been pulled by the sponsor. That concludes the report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Walker.
No report.
Thank you. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Hokum.
Mayor, at the last council meeting, a resolution was passed authorizing the city attorney to seek legal redress against the owner of the property at 401 South Main Street, Mr. Joe Metter. And as of July the 1st, three bids have been received in this effort. They include the company, A Demolition Company, in the amount of $29,000. The second company is Snyder Environmental. This amount is $123,813. The second company is Environmental Protection Association, $199,399. And therefore, we're taking actions after these bids has been given and I will give you further information on that. And that concludes my report. And we also will be seeking to clean up Young's Cleaners that were burned also.
Okay.
And also the cleanup of downtown also.
Okay. With Young's Cleaners, is the insurance coming through on that as far as the cleanup on it?
I'm not...
Sure, okay.
Not sure on that.
Okay.
As far as on that information as we speak.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, I don't want to be rude or in a total opposition to everything, but a building burned in High Springs and they cleared it up very shortly. We have a building downtown Pine Bluff that's blocking traffic and we'll, if we wait as long as we did, and we're still waiting on the fourth building, the 4th Street building to main, we're gonna wait a long time. I think that if we care about our city, then we need to get on that right away, whatever the case, whatever the cause, whatever needs to happen, we need to get on that. It is blocking traffic on Main Street and I think that is a hazard in itself.
Okay.
Just heard Number 4, we're seeking legal.
I know, but yeah, we need to do something, that don't need to last any longer.
May I speak, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had Number 10 on the agenda, but I went on and pulled it, about the $100,000 since Alderman Hokum had already looked into it. I hadn't met with him, but you know, since there's a forward motion on it now, you know, I'm all for it because it does look bad and it's just sitting there. And if it's, if it's any asbestos in it, I mean, if it's raining and things, it's gonna run off in the street, the stormwater runoff. I mean, so I agree with you on the ground, but I agree with you as well on the whole. I'm just glad forward progress is being made on it.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, thank you, Alderman Hokum. Public Works, Alderman Mays?
Well, I just want to say once again, good evening. In the, on the west side, we're still having a problem with dumping. I got a call on the 3rd of July, somebody had dumped a love seat and a couch in the middle of Short Third and Hemlock and at the corner of another, a whole couch at the corner of Short Third and Oakwood. I mean, just threw it right in the middle of the street, you know. I just gonna need, I'm just gonna need some more help in, down in the year to help come back this dumping. I mean, I don't know what to do other than to get some cameras and the people, the West Side Loop Association, neighborhood watchers, is offering to help, raise money for some cameras. I mean, it seemed to me as if we really care, y'all need to, I don't think y'all see some of this stuff, but if you see it, you would care a lot more about the city. If somebody come through a couch and you all ward in front of your house, you see, you don't understand what I'm saying. And these citizens don't know what to do, you know? They, you know, you guys seen your citizens look out their windows, there's a big old couch out there. I mean, just asking for more compassion and caring about this issue. Thank you.
Alderman Mays, I'll say that the caring and the passion, we're out there walking the streets and tagging the furniture of those that have been dumped. So I think that we're all very compassionate about it. The problem of it is, is how do you control it? So I think the whole city is, joins in with you in sharing that, is that how do you come up with a solution to it? And I think we're trying to do that, really do.
Man, they, they just not dumping on the west side, they dumping on northeast.
Exactly, exactly. It's all over the city.
Dumping all over town.
Yeah, I agree. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd?
No report, Mayor, except the fact that we will meet on the 15th at 2:00 P.M.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. No official report, however, I'll be there free tonight. There are two important things that I know that Pine Bluff needs very desperately and that is people and taxes. So I'm gonna ask the audience and everybody listening, where are your kids going to school and where do you live? Where do you string your tax dollars? Where do you got rockets? Where do you got lawnmowers, refrigerators? I'm gonna meet you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Administration, Alderman Stepp?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, were you going to bring up the job description I called you about?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
At our previous, not this administrative meeting, but the past one, the committee voted to move it forward to the full council on the administrative changes of the administrative job duties for the assistant to the mayor. So I want to bring that back up before the full council for any discussion. I apologize for that, I've forgotten about that.
Okay.
But it was, it's why I discussed that out in my previous administrative meeting.
Okay. You want to put that in the form of a motion or what? How do we?
No, I, how do I want to put it? The committee, the Administration Committee met and it received a due pass from the committee and I cast a no vote on it. So I guess I put it in the form of a motion that it be added to the agenda.
Okay.
I'm not clear, you all had a meeting about salaries or something like, is that correct?
It was a change in the job description, I think, for the assistant, to the mayor, a mayor's assistant.
Correct.
And it was at the, not, it was three weeks ago.
Correct.
And the committee voted then, but we didn't bring it up at my, at the next council meeting, you know, table.
Is that, is that a resolution that exists already, is it?
No.
No, that wasn't a resolution.
We'd need some legislation to present to the council.
Okay.
So you need a copy of the changed job description?
Correct.
Okay, so it can come before the next one then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public Safety, Alderman Brummett?
We had a Public Safety Committee meeting at 4 o'clock and the Fire Department gave us a real nice report of their monthly activities. There were 15 structured fires. They had a total of 356 incident responses. Structure fires and so on are up a little bit because of summertime and they mentioned that there would probably be more incidents of emergency medical responses due to children being out and playing and things of that nature. But the incidents are in line with prior years. They reviewed the amount of training, which is extensive, that the Fire Department does on a monthly basis to keep our Fire Department employees up to speed as far as their readiness. The report includes the proactive fire prevention activities going on within the department, which are numerous, and I hope all the Aldermen will review those. There's also a list of activities focusing on the community of different events where the Fire Department had a presence and made presentations to try to curb fires within our city. We want to commend the Fire Department on the good job they're doing. Chief Eubanks gave us an update on the Police Department activities. Some of you may have read in the paper that overall year-to-date, the crime is down 17.94%. That's significant. The only incident that really had an uptick was in robberies and he explained to us several incidents of how those are being handled and where they've come about. But they have done a good job of catching the bad guys. In other words, there are several of them that were repeat offenders in the area of robberies have been captured and taken to the courts. One of the significant things to me was that the more serious crimes were down like 25%, like rape, murder, things of that nature, just compared to, for the last month. We also reviewed Items 2 and 3 on, that are on the agenda. The committee had no recommendation on those two, it'll be up to the council for their consideration. So I think that concludes the Public Safety Committee report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions.
We have an ordinance amending Section 26-155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas regarding downtown limited time parking penalty for exceeding time limit to add subsection D concerning parking along Barracuda Street near and in front of the Jefferson County Courthouse and for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending Section 26-155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas regarding downtown limited time parking penalty for exceeding time limit and add, and to add subsection D concerning parking along Barracuda Street near and in front of the Jefferson County Courthouse and for related purposes.
Somebody gonna make a motion?
Who for adoption? Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that an ordinance amending Section 26-155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas regarding downtown limited time parking penalty for exceeding time limit to add subsection D concerning parking along Barracuda Street near and in front of the Jefferson County Courthouse and for related purposes. Floor is now open for discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did the Traffic Operations Committee, as the council instructed, review this and give us a recommendation on this?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
And I think that that should go through that committee.
I did too, and that's, that's one reason that I was reluctant to move it forwards because I didn't, I have not seen anything or heard anything about that, a request that the council made of that committee to hear this. And I really think they need to before it be voted on.
That was what was moved the first time it was read.
Yep.
Let me ask a question.
Are you through, Mr. Brummett?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Stepp?
When you take it to the Traffic Operations, what would be, what are they looking for? What would they be looking for at that committee, with that group? You're talking about less than five parking spaces. We're talking about fines. I've asked a question and nobody was able to tell me, how many citations have been given for parking violations in the last three years, anywhere? Anywhere? Now, we're talking about four or five slots that in the previous years other than this year hadn't been a problem. Because if you're talking about three or four parking spots, the people that's doing business in the courthouse is mostly gonna park on that courthouse parking lot. Only time you get an overflow crowd is when you got a big court that's going on and people are going down there to look, to see and be seen, but most time, you're not gonna catch those people going in there to take care of no building because we got an overflow and we don't have no places to park. But there's no, this, this year, as I understand it, I don't know what happened to the ticket, but this is the first year that anybody that I can recall and anybody that they can tell me that has been issued a citation for parking anywhere. And so we really making a big mountain out of moheads and with the Traffic Committee, I don't know what they, I'm trying to figure out what would they tell us? What are we looking for them to tell us?
They just always do with any traffic stuff, but as far as this, you know, I can't be for this to, you know, this is kinda like, this smacks real high of privileged, you know, people getting a privilege for approximately eight weeks a year to park their cars there with, they can park in a parking lot, people can still do their signs and stuff like in order, but why change the law to let people park for three solid weeks in a spot because they get it? And, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, that's, that's like a law of privilege for, they're trying to pass for candidates. So I don't, I don't get it, so I can't support it for that. So, I mean, that's, that's what it looks like, I would think that's what the public would think about it.
But this same public has been here all these years. They were there in 2012 when all of us that was campaigning, set our signs on our cars and some of us was almost in the middle of the street and nobody had a problem with it. And, and as far as I know now, we only had one person that was concerned about it this time and maybe because they wasn't running. But we ain't never had no problem with that all these years. I'm trying to see what brought this on then? Since y'all asked a question, what brought on thing? What brought this on?
Any other comments?
My only problem with the, is it's a procedural problem. It should have gone to the Planning Commission because they put together the rules. And then the Traffic Operations Committee, which is made up of Larry Reynolds, the head of the Planning Department, people in the Police Department, all, I would have thought we would have given them the courtesy of reviewing it with them and that's what I had asked before. And if they had approved it, then I would probably be supporting it, but I just can't under the guise that we've just kinda circumvented the process.
When all of this was going on, it, I don't know where it went besides to Ms. Hill. That's the only person that I know that was dealing with, Ms. Hill and the mayor.
That it came to me?
I'm sure you was aware that she was down...
Of this?
No, that you were aware that she was down, giving tickets at the courthouse.
Yes, I was aware of it.
So that's why I said the only people that was involved was Ms. Hill and you. So, you know, it wasn't a problem with the Planning Commission then or anybody.
She was vying, vying by the law. The law says they can't do it.
But the law, was that a new law?
No, it's an old law.
The law had been here all the time.
I've never gone down there and put up signs, you know, as you said, all the candidates did it. I've tried to go out one-on-one and talk to people and get their vote and don't harass them at the, which is what I kinda feel like at the polling place for several weeks. And I think the hood, Hood Building, Hood and Company, I don't think that they're for it. I don't think anybody's really talked to them and their family about it, based on what I've been told from them, that they're not for it and that's their, front, right through there is where their building is. So anyway.
I, you know, frankly, I love the hoods to death, but they have certain parking there that nobody else should be parking in and, and I think it's a good thing that they do. They probably need three, you know, and which would help them as well. So it's no reflection on them, they're great people.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you. I had something else to say, but I would like to address quickly the about the campaign. You campaigned where you want to campaign, if you decide you want to, you know, come down, you come down. I think that we need to stop trying to find ways to stop people from assembling themselves and campaigning. You so decide that you want, you don't want to do that, let that be. But again, this has not been a problem over the years. In 2012, when I campaigned, it was not a problem. I campaigned with the mayor and Alderman Stepp as well as, I don't think y'all support, but that's enough. And we had no problem. If you want to use it as a campaign thought, you're talking about two to four weeks perhaps a year, that's 52 weeks in a year, and you're talking about giving some leeway from two to four weeks if, if some years they don't even have elections. My whole problem is that this is not about the parking, this is about people wanting to have a separate way about various things. And I just think that that's not how city government operate, period. We have been, we go down there and we assemble peacefully. If you get troubled then, that's when you call the police in. I just think it was a disgrace to have one of our inspectors to come down and write tickets. I also think it was a disgrace to, later, after that was fixed, after that was, had gone into an order and gone into a vote by the city council then, before we could drive from this city hall to county courthouse, there were three or four police officers down there writing tickets for parking, which they had never done that before. I just think it's, it's not necessarily things that Pine Bluff need. We don't need the separateness that's going on in Pine Bluff right now. We need the law and order and we need... We need the law and order, and we need to focus on things that make Pine Bluff better and not a controlling Pine Bluff. And that's that's how I feel about most of most of the things that we do. We do the things in a personal manner, and that's not what it's all about. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Yes, sir.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
I looked at this very hard, studied it from a political standpoint. If if we walk down, I had people walk down there with me, we looked at it, I think it's three thirty-minute parking signs down there. It's a good idea, but it's not right and it's the wrong time. If you open it up from Maine to Pine, east and west, you're gonna have boats down there, you're gonna have yachts, you're gonna have buses, you know, you're gonna have a campaign competition out of this world.
You have such a reserve, man.
Well, if you study that, if you study that, I'm just saying, I I I look at it from a political standpoint. You're gonna have one candidate gonna have twenty cars lined up down there with the name on the side of it because there won't be no parking. I'm just being real and I'm just trying to break it down in a in a common sense type from a political standpoint. I wouldn't want my competitors with ten cars down there for four weeks campaigning against me. And that's what that's what we seen that's what we seen. It started back during the election, the primary, and we studied it then. If that was opened up then, it would have just been a mess down there from Walnut all the way down to Main Street, east and west during the political season.
Alderman Brown, he's got the floor.
No, I mean, I I looked at it, I I pondered over the weekend, and we took a tour down there and rolled through it three or four times and looked at it, and it it would be it wouldn't be right for me to 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 support this. I thought about it very hard, and like I said, it'd be like you say, you have you have yachts, you have you have people building signs down there, campaign signs, you have people. It would just be a total mess. And when we when we looked at it a while back, after after the the police was cleared them out down there, it it looked nice. People kept saying it looks nice down there, you know, so I'm just saying.
I just wanted to say one thing. Now, you tell me that you can get that many yachts in three parking spaces. Now, you just said that there were three parking spaces.
Well, I didn't say the three signs, the three the three no parking signs.
Three no parking signs, and you drove around it three or four times to study to study what? Three parking signs? And you gonna put yachts and boats and things in it? You know, I'm not trying to change your mind as to how you're gonna vote, but let's don't get this thing all out of white like this is some conglomeration. You talking about one block with three signs down there. But, you know, I'm just saying.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
We pick some of the craziest stuff to argue about.
Yeah, thank you.
People know who they're gonna vote for.
Any other comments?
Uh.
Yes, sir.
This last election, not only at the courthouse, at the co-op and other places, there were confrontations between opponents. While we have, there's different stuff on this agenda in every council meeting we come to, and I I I'm gonna let us move on, but every council meeting we come to is a confrontation where we make no progress. What we talking about now, if you doing your job, you don't have to worry about having fifteen people hold no sign for you because your work gonna speak for itself. You don't have to worry about having people having a block long holding a sign for you. We spent the last two years fussing, fighting for nothing, and I hate sometime even come down here.
So we have a motion on the floor. It's been second. So are we what's do we need to vote on that? Do we want it to go to committee? What do we want to do? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Easterly?
No.
Alderman Steppes?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Mays?
No.
Alderman Ho.
No.
Okay, I cast the no vote.
Okay, we'll move on to number two. We have an ordinance amending the job description for position of Assistant Chief of Police in the Police Department, requiring that no person may be promoted to the positions of Deputy Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Captain or equivalent, and that no person may be promoted to the position of Assistant Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Deputy Chief or equivalent, and for related purposes and declaring an emergency up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending the job description for the position of Assistant Chief of Police in the Police Department, requiring that no person may be promoted to the positions of Deputy Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Captain or equivalent, and that no person may be promoted to the positions of Assistant Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Deputy Chief or equivalent, and for related purposes and declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that an ordinance amending the job description for the position of Assistant Chief of Police in the in the Police Department, requiring that no person may be promoted to the positions of Deputy Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Captain or equivalent, and that no person may be promoted to the positions of Assistant Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Deputy Chief or equivalent, and for related purposes and declaring an emergency. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, sir.
You know, I don't mind having adding qualifications to to the position, but this is way too narrow for we went over this when we set for Police Chief and the Fire Chief both so that they could have Assistant Police Chiefs, and we did a lot of work on that. And now for to come back and try to limit, you know, down to this level is 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 just way too much limitation on who that because that's gonna be the right-hand person that they go to. I mean, they've got to trust them with everything they do, and they've got to have that person has to have, they've got to know that they've got their back at all times. And it's not a thing that's and and at the time when they did it, it there was a lot of discussion about that. This is not a thing where people come up through the ranks, but this, you know, and but they do need to be some of the upper ranks, but they don't they doesn't need to be quite this narrow. And this just pertains to the, you know, why is the Fire Department not listed? So that's the two that's concerns that I have.
I'll address one of your concerns. You weren't able to be at the meeting today, and I understand that. But my concern of it is, is that when you use an illustration, even I hear other than city, you go to the army, you go to any process for promotion, they're not gonna take a sergeant and promote him over lieutenant. And here's my concern, is the fact that when you tell me that a lieutenant refuses to take the captain test, but he still could be promoted, something wrong with that picture. It takes great sacrifice for some of these young men and women that comes in here and they are looking for promotion. I don't know nobody that's hired in to, I don't know people that I want to stay where I am. But when the time comes, when you have been trained, and now you're sitting there, you are a captain, and they reach over you and say, well, I think he'll serve me better because all of these people ought to have gone through the same training. But if one tells me that I don't want to be promoted, I don't want to take the test, but if a bigger position comes up, I want it. There's something wrong with that picture. And I think that's what we have here now when you're talking about the pool. If we have a narrow pool, then it's incumbent upon the department head to make one ready to be moved to the next level. But if we sit here, and I I I heard a statement that the the mayor said at at the last administration meeting, that some of the lieutenants didn't want to take the test. And my concern was, why? Why they did they feel like they couldn't pass it? Why did they want to take the test? They feel like it wasn't enough money in the next rank? Why they didn't want to take the test? We can't sit here and promote one rank over another because that they didn't want to take it. And the chief said to me today, he knew why I put this legislation out there. I told him, I said, well, tell me, I don't know. And he said he heard about there was somebody that was a lieutenant that I wanted to be promoted. I don't even know the man. You know, I've heard the name, but I wouldn't know him if he walked in here. But by mere fact that you got some legislation here and it's brought up some concerns that you want to promote one over another, something wrong with that picture.
So so you're telling me that this legislation is not about the legislation, it's because you've heard that that some other person might be at the point of besides?
I ain't heard nothing like that.
I thought you just said that.
I said the chief said, no, no.
You're talking about the captains not taking people not taking tests, I don't, you know.
What the mayor said.
You caught me, he was out of order. You caught me, I'm I'm gonna let you know, you stopped me from talking, so stop me from talking. And that's fair.
Wait, 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 no, let me say this. Okay.
Who's got the floor?
I got the floor. The chief stated that he had heard that was the reason that this legislation put out there. I stated that the the mayor stated at the administration meeting that there were some lieutenants that didn't want to take the test. I didn't I didn't say that. I'm just repeating what I heard. And my concern of it is, is that they might have a legitimate reason that they don't want to take the test, but if you don't want to take the test, then you ought not to be given consideration for a promotion when somebody else has took the test and passed it and been promoted to another rank. They took theyself out of the running for a promotion when they refused to take that test, and and I can't see it no other way.
Okay, Alderman Easterly?
You know, why does come up now? I mean, and why is the why is the Fire Department not in it too? If we're gonna change it for one, they change it for the other, and you know, I mean, I just saying the pool is too narrow.
Okay.
I mean, for because we went over this, that wasn't a problem at the time. We all we we kicked that all around, and we agreed that that person needed to be a that's not a position promotion type, it's a position that they're assistant to the chief because that's who he wants to in that position.
So there ain't no?
And so and so that and, you know, laws, if you put qualifications on it, I don't have a problem. The only problem I have is that the field is way too narrow for those positions.
So what I'm so what I hear you saying is that it's not a position for a promotion, but it's a position of an appointment? That's what I heard you say, huh?
That's what it was. That's what it was.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's what it is.
What? Please, yes. Please, let's do that. You still are you still talking?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. My question with all this is, is that why do you not let the proper procedure fall in place? If a if a job description needs to be changed, the proper procedure is for it to come from the department head to make the changes. It's not to come from an older person who is not even in that department, has nothing to really to do with that department, all of a sudden knows what's going on in the department. I'm not through.
I ain't said a word. I just got my hand up.
Okay, so my point is, is let's let the proper procedure take its course, and if a change needs to be made, it can be made. That procedure, they will rewrite it and then bring it to the proper committee. Now, I do agree with the fact of what Alderman Easterly said. If it's the Fire Chief, Police Police Chief, if it is the Street Department, Inspection and Zoning, whatever the department head is, whatever the department is, that department head should have the right to be able to choose who they want as their assistant. They should be able to do that. They're going to pick the most qualified person for what they're trying to achieve. And I think let the process, let the process take its place. Once again, as I have been saying for about the last two or three months, this is administration, you are legislation. Let the administration do its thing as far as the proper procedure. Let us do our work. That is what we are supposed to do. I do have a copy of it if anybody would like to refer to it. Yes, sir.
Where is it in that it gives you the authority to set a job description on any position?
I didn't say set it.
Wait a minute, you said change the job description, it comes from the administration at the head.
I said let the department head draft the job description and let it go to the committee.
I'm the chairman of the administration committee. Mayor, you don't have the authority to write a job description.
I didn't say I did.
Well, that's what you telling me.
No, sir, I did not.
You don't have?
No, sir, I did not. No, sir, I did not. I did not say that.
And 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 now you tell me that I don't have the authority to put an ordinance out here?
No, sir, not for not not for that, unless unless you're gonna go through the department, work with the department head.
What prohibits me from putting an ordinance out here with this description?
I don't know.
What?
I don't know.
I'm just asking the question.
I don't know. You answer it.
Well, that's see, that's my whole point, is that as long as you do things that you think is the right way for you to do it, and when you a question about it, then all of a sudden I become a troublemaker, I become a racist. Well, I'm gonna become whatever I need to become, especially when you don't do the things right, and then you accept for me, you want me to accept it when you know it's not right and your counterparts know it's not right, and I can't sit here and go along with something that I know is wrong before it even gets started. And anybody that can shake their head and and think what they want to think, but the mayor does not have the authority to write no job description for no department.
Didn't say I did.
I I know what I'm doing, I know my role.
I didn't say that I did have that right. Okay, any other discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to reiterate what the chief said at the Public Safety Committee meeting, which was basically the same thing Alderman Easterly said. By this ordinance, you are making the pool less and less that he can pull from. There are only two captains in the department, you know, and somebody doesn't want to take the test is because of either economy, they they're not gonna make as much money, or the responsibilities don't go along with what they want to do at the time. So I just feel like that what we've got in place is is fine, and I don't see changing it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Easterly?
No.
Alderman Steppes?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Yes.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we have an ordinance prohibiting the purposeful removal or damage of signs up for the second reading.
I thought he pulled it.
No, not that one.
He didn't?
He didn't, did you?
Did you pull it?
I don't think so.
An ordinance prohibiting the purposeful removal or damaging of signs.
Have it on the calendar for the next meeting. We have an ordinance providing that the City Inspection Department waive any permit and inspection fees for prospective purchasers of real estate in the downtown area up for the second reading.
An ordinance providing that the City Inspection Department waive any permit and inspection fees for prospective purchasers of real estate in the downtown area.
Has this been the committee, proper committee? Or we need to go Planning Development? Aren't y'all gonna have a meeting for long?
Fifteen.
Would it be okay to go to the Planning Development?
At two P.M.? Okay.
Okay, we'll send that to Planning Development and put it on the calendar. We have an ordinance requiring that all meeting of and conferences concerning construction and renovation projects or our city facilities shall include the mayor, members of the city council, the finance director, and the project managers, and that no funds be expended for any project unless previously appropriated or authorized by city council up for the first reading.
Whereas it is essential that the members of the city's governing body be informed of the progress of the progress of city projects concerning the renovation or construction of city facilities. And whereas, these, these projects often involve tens or even hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it is duty of all city officials to ensure, uh, funds are spent wisely in pursuant to lawful appropriation or authorization. And whereas, attendance at all meetings in which process, planning, and execution of these projects are governed, are concerned, gives the participants a fuller understanding and opportunity to provide input. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor's office shall provide each member of the city council with reasonable advance notice of all meetings or conferences which concern the construction or renovation of city facilities and the expenditure of city funds for such, such a purpose. Section two, that all members of the city council, mayor, finance director, and the projects manager shall attend each meeting or conference as specified in section one. Section three, that no funds shall be expended for any construction or renovate, or renovation project unless said funds are appropriated or authorized by the city council. Section four, the, the provisions hereof are declared severable, and should any part be deemed invalid by a court of law, the remaining provisions shall continue in full, in force and effect. Section five, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, it shall be published by the clerk as provided by law. Section six, this ordinance becomes effective on the 31st day after its adoption.
Okay, well, place this on the calendar, what committee should it go to?
I think that was probably planning.
That'll be fine, if it's-
Administration.
Administration? Well, it is a procedural thing more than anything else, so probably administration may be the right place. Will you take it to administration?
I don't know, probably that's where it goes.
Okay. We'll ask administration committee to give us a recommendation on it. We'll move on to number six. A resolution override the mayor's veto or resolution number 3704.
Whereas, the mayor exercised a veto over several lines of resolution number 3704 passed May 5th, 2014, and whereas, it is the desire of the city council to override the mayor's veto. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor's veto of resolution number 3704 is hereby overridden.
Move for adoption.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, that the resolution to override the mayor's veto of resolution number 3704 be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. And at this time, I would like to invite our H.R. Director, Ms. Conaway, to the podium to explain the purpose of the line item vetoes.
Okay. Prior to October of 2011, which is the day our handbook was revised, before that, we had an issue with interim department heads working in department heads' positions, getting the pay that the previous department head was making. It was an issue, for example, that you have a, a interim department head who has been there maybe five, six years, taking the place of someone who's retiring for maybe 20-plus years. And it was not fair at that time to employees or the administration to say that you should work in this person's job, even though you don't have the experience or the years making that amount of pay. This is the reason it was addressed in the new handbook. So, the reason for it being addressed in the new handbook, because that was a problem. In the new handbook, it states that you would get the entry level, which we do have a survey now, or you would get 10% on top of your pay, whichever one is greater. And that's the way we have it now. Since the passage of the book, we have also had four times we've done this, and we've done it according to the handbook. Now, uh, another problem I see with it, does it include others in a similar situation? Because if it does not include everyone in a similar situation, it could be a problem. And I will continue to follow the handbook, because that's, that's what I have to do, until I'm told not to do so.
Yes, sir.
So, is it correct that the veto was just to clear up, clean up the, uh, items that did not match the current handbook?
Yes.
Which, uh, if we don't, then we've got problems with other employees-
Yes, and it's, we, we have been consistent with this since we passed it. So, how do we go back and correct what the, we're consistent? If we stop that now and do this for a certain amount of employees and not include everyone in a situation, that will be a problem.
Alderman Hoakam?
When you say others in similar situation, uh, you, can you name names?
I prefer not to, but I know we've had four interim statuses.
You have four others?
Since, since, uh, after this approval of this handbook. We've had four interim statuses.
So, they-
And they started with the entry level.
So, they would have to be included.
That's my suggestion.
I guess he was asking the question, how many more, you got two in, that was in the resolution? And so, two of them-
They, they would have to be included.
I mean, it's gonna look, it would look discriminatory. It would look, if you leave them out.
If we leave these out-
You know, if you have, if, if, what's the reason for leaving them out? Um, who are you leaving out? It all depends on that.
If we leave them out, we are, are liable for a lawsuit, that was you saying?
I can't guarantee you that, but it's possible.
I guess-
I mean, but my, my whole thing is that, not just that, if we're gonna be consistent with the handbook that was passed by the council in October 2011, then now we're not being consistent with the handbook.
And, and that's the whole question, that, um, when we worked with H.R. and our city attorney, it's to get the resolution in line with the handbook, so that we will have consistency since the handbook was passed by the council in 2011. So, I don't think that you can pick and choose when the handbook applies and when it doesn't apply. If that's the case, then why have the handbook? You know, the handbook was made for a reason, or was, it was voted on for a reason, and it was implemented for a reason. So, if we're not gonna go by the handbook, then let's vote to do away with the handbook. That's, that's, to me, the whole point, so. Yes, ma'am?
The persons that you are referring to, was they in interim status, or were they just, uh, doing the job of, you know, the, the previous person?
Well, since the first resolution came out, the one that, that we were trying, what you're trying to veto now, all that was done then. Everyone who was doing the job or in interim all became interim, or either got promoted at that time. So, let's say someone was doing an interim for a year, well, not interim, just doing the job, they would go, we go back to when they started doing the job and made them interim with the correct salary, according to this handbook.
Okay, and how, like, um, I know, you know, I think, one person that is a department head now, uh, that, you know, they've taken the position when the previous director retired. So, they didn't go through interim status, they were-
They did.
Promoted.
They went through interim status, and they were given the interim pay, which was the entry level.
Okay, how long, what did they serve in interim?
Maybe probably a year and a half.
That's, um, that's, uh, one or two people.
That's, that's one person.
Alderman Hoakam? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I have, um, one other question, and, you know, I think that we had one situation where, uh, that the person served as interim, they were getting the pay as the director, but they left their name on there as interim before it was moved up. So, uh, yeah, in situations like that, they came in getting the money, but they, you know, the name was not there, it was interim instead.
No, we, we, no one was getting the money. No, since, since, uh, October 2011, they were getting the interim.
Okay, Alderman Hoakam?
I asked the-
Sir, yes, yes, sir.
If we leave these other four people, she was talking about, are, are we liable for a lawsuit?
The four people who were not, uh, who actually served as interim, not those four people, I think the concern would be the people who are not addressed within this resolution that were promoted. Not the four people who actually, since 2011, gained interim sta, status. It would be the people who actually, and I guess you would probably, you know, your bigger concern is gonna be the people who are not named at this particular point.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Are we liable if we leave them off?
The potential is there, I mean, I can't, as Ms. Conaway indicated, I can't tell you for sure, but the potential is there. If you, if there can be a distinction made between who you're leaving off versus who receives the benefit, if there can be a distinction that's made, then there's the potential for a lawsuit, yes.
And, and you also might want to think about the cost of how much it would be to go back and make that correction.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Brown. This is gonna be a very personal question, Ms. Conaway. Were you not in?
Yes, prior to 2011.
Were you here?
That's exactly right. I was, because it was prior to 2011. And anyone who was interim then was getting the pay.
Just wanted to make sure.
That's exactly right.
You weren't getting interim pay?
Uh-huh.
And you, you, I mean, you-
Y'all were getting the pay, I was getting the full pay, yes.
You were less than interim?
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Conaway? Thank you.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
With the people involved, just what does this particular line item?
Sir? Sir?
With the people involved, just what does this particular line item need to, I want that to be done?
For the, the two individuals involved, yes, come here, the mayor.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, I'm thinking you're saying, uh, what, what, what change is going, is going to make them make the pay of their person before them, going back to what was previously in the budget, instead of, uh, the entry level pay, or the 10%, whichever is greater, which the book states.
Okay. Alderman Stepp, did you have a question?
I was just gonna ask the, uh, attorney, in lieu of what you're saying about the people that's left out, then, am I hearing that probably that could be a, a resolution that would put out there that would include the, the other two people that you are referring to?
The council can submit a resolution, uh, as it relates to that, which would include the people who it affects.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Let's have roll call.
Alderman Brummett?
No.
Alderman Easterly?
No.
Alderman Stepp?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Hoakam?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'm confused about where we're gonna be now that they've overridden the veto, as far as those employees are concerned. But that's okay, I can, I can figure that out later.
I don't know, I say lawsuit, that's all I've got.
A res, we have a resolution authorizing the city clerk to destroy che, checks associated with closed accounts.
Whereas, the city maintained a checking account with Pine Bluff National Bank, now Reliance Bank, for the city's general fund, which was closed out and shows a zero balance. And whereas, said account was closed on or about July 10th, 2012, due to, uh, attempted wire fraud. And whereas, the city, the clerk's office should be permitted to immediately destroy the remaining checks, beginning with check number 8278 through check number 10,000. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to destroy blank checks 8278 through 10,000 on account number 8635 with Pine Bluff National Bank, now Reliance Bank, as the checks are no longer needed. The destruction shall be documented by the clerk and witnessed by the finance director, both whom should sign as attesting witnesses.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, that a resolution authorizing the city clerk to destroy checks associated with closed accounts. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution requesting the Pine Bluff Police Department and the Fire and Emergency Services Department include on all incident reports, the mailing address of the property, which is the site of the incident.
Whereas, police reports and fire and first responder reports make note of the phys, of physical location of an incident, but there are times the physical location and the mailing address are not the same. And whereas, it is desired that the mailing address be included as part of the incident report when the mailing address is known or can easily be ascertained. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the chief of police, of the police department and the chief of the fire department and emergency services department are requested to direct that all incident reports prepared by officers or firemen include, in addition to the physical location of the incident, the mailing address of the property, including zip code, when the mailing address is known or can easily be ascertained.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that a resolution requesting the Pine Bluff Police Department and the Fire Department and Emergency Services Department include on all incident reports, the mailing address of the property, which is the site of the incident. Floor is now open for discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's my resolution. Uh, it goes back to that 71602 zip code in, in Whitehall. Now, it was an armed robbery at, on 61214, at the H.R. Food Mart in, at the corner of Martha Mitchell and Hutchinson. Now, if you look at that building you're going in front of, it has that same address with Whitehall, Arkansas on it. So, my point is, when you look at these police report, there's no zip code and mailing address to identify where that crime has taken place at. And there's a lot of crime, burglaries and things are happening in that area, okay? And it's not being reported as far as-
Yes, because it is.
If Whitehall wants to take over, they, they have every address out there, I mean, that should go against their zip code and, and their jurisdiction, instead of, and at the same time, it's all going against Pine Bluff, even though it's, it's Pine Bluff on that, in that area. But if you look at that store out there, it has Whitehall, Arkansas on the front window when you walk through the door. And this is just more, uh, another way to keep documentation and direction on how we're gonna deal with the zip code, as far as Whitehall, uh, Arkansas, uh, crossing our city limits line and, and putting our add, the, the mailing addresses, Whitehall, Arkansas. I even got a call the other day where a lady sent a letter through the Whitehall address, and she put Pine Bluff 71602, and they sent it back to her. They said that Pine Bluff doesn't exist in that Barracuda Street area, you know? That's what she's telling me. So, a lot of these police reports do not have the zip code to identify Pine Bluff, Pine Bluff as, versus Whitehall on that 71602 zip code. And once again, this is a way to do the documentation and direction of this issue.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Brummett?
Mayor, uh, chief, is that a problem within the department?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Um, let's do a roll call. I know.
Alderman?
No.
Alderman Easterly?
Yes.
Alderman Stepp?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Yes.
Alderman Boyd?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Mays?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Hoakam?
No.
Is it four to three? Okay, it passes.
Did you vote aye?
Sir?
Did you vote aye?
Oh, it's four to three.
And you voted aye?
No.
Did you vote four?
No, I didn't vote at all.
Okay, so it fails.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry. I put one on it and it, yes, but I voted aye. Takes five for it to pass?
She didn't vote.
She doesn't have to vote.
She didn't vote.
We have a resolution, amending resolution number 3688 to correct legal description regarding a conveyance of real property to Habitat for Humanity to correct legal description.
Whereas resolution number 3688, the city council authorized a conveyance of real property to Habitat for Humanity, and whereas the legal description of the property to be conveyed contained an error requiring correction to reflect the intent of the parties. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, resolution number 36388 passed March 17, 2014, is amended to correct the legal description found therein to state the following as the real property conveyed to Jefferson County Habitat for Humanity as set forth below. Section 2, the city attorney will prepare a deed for the mayor's signature and delivery to Habitat for Humanity.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second that a resolution, amending resolution number 3688 to correct legal description regarding a conveyance of real property to Habitat for Humanity to collect legal description, to correct legal description. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution appointing Eddie L. Harris, Jr. to the Pine Bluff Crime Commission.
Do you want me to read them all at the same time? Mr. Brummett?
That'll be fine. Is that okay with everybody? Just read them all at one time and move on through them?
Whereas the vacancies on the Pine Bluff, there are vacancies on the Pine Bluff Crime Commission. And whereas per city ordinance, each member of the council and the mayor may appoint a member of the commission. Alderman Holcomb has appointed Eddie Harris. Alderman Stepp has appointed Theo Sherman Dickerson. Alderman Boyd has appointed Clint Todd. And the mayor has, thank you, has appointed Kevin Reese. The appointment of, of these commissioners shall expire in order June 1st, all of, June 1st, 2019. They are hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the...
Quick question.
Yes, sir?
This Clint Todd, is it the same? I was just looking at this organization. Well, this guy isn't attorney. This is different. One that I recommend.
Alderman Boyd, did you, you recommended Nate Todd?
Nathaniel Todd.
Why don't we make an amendment to that, and we'll clear that up for the next one then? Is that okay with you?
That's fine. I want to clear it up.
Or we want, you want to change it, and we'll go ahead and prove it and move on with it?
That's fine.
To change the name?
That's fine.
Yeah, because we know who it is supposed to be.
Okay.
Okay. Let's do that. To make it easier. Okay. So we know it's Nate Todd, Nathaniel Todd. Okay. All right. It's been properly moved in second that we have Eddie Harris, Jr., Theo S. Dickerson, and Nathaniel Todd, and Kevin Reese appointed to the Crime Advisory Commission. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution appointing Alexandra Cosmides to the Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation Commission.
Whereas the term of Roy Tolson as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission has expired, and whereas the mayor has appointed Alexandria Cosmides to succeed Mr. Tolson subject to council approval. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Alexandria Cosmides to the Parks and Recreation, Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation Commission, who serve a term to expire in June 1, 2019, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Alexandra Cosmides to the Pine Bluff Parks and Rec- Commission be approved.